With a public meeting tonight on World's Best Workforce. And Carrie Thompson, our curriculum director is here to give us that report. Thanks Carrie.
Listen right here.
I'm going to talk about the summary tonight. There's quite a detailed report that I think you also received in email. And pending your approval tonight of the information that you hear and what you've read ahead, then we'll send this summary on to the Department of Education. And we have to post the big, long, detailed report on our school website so our public can review that and see the detail. So I'm just, I'm going to start in on the second page. World's Best Workforce is Minnesota legislation and it has several requirements. And our district has followed the requirements of this legislation to be our district goals for a few years since this came into being. And one of the things we have to do is to have a World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee. And in our district, we use the same, we use the same group that's also our Curriculum Review Committee because those people are aware of the same content and they're getting the same reports. So those community members serve a dual purpose. And you'll notice at the list there that most of them are community and parent representatives and that that's a requirement of both of those groups. Small numbers of school people, large numbers of community people. So I do appreciate the time these people put in. They come to several meetings during the school year and help our teachers to stay focused on representing what our community wants. Then further in to the report, one of the requirements of World's Best Workforce is that all students are ready for school. Districts make their own goal in that area. And our goal this last year was that we would use our kindergarten readiness tool that we designed here locally. We would use it with 100% of children. And we did meet that goal. We screened all of the children coming in and about half of them demonstrated readiness for kindergarten. About a third of them were partially ready. And we have 22% who did not meet readiness expectations. Then we watched this along with the MAP testing that students do follow winter in spring and watch for growth. And I will say that almost all of the children are where they need to be by the end of the kindergarten year. It was two years ago, it was interesting to me that there were a small number of children who repeated kindergarten. And the second time around, they were on the top of the class instead of the bottom. So sometimes they just need more time. It's a developmental issue. Another requirement is that we have all students reading at grade level by the third grade, that they're proficient, and the measure for that is the state tests. Our local goal leading up to third grade is that we would have 80% of our Ferguson Falls students in kindergarten first and second scoring at least at the 50th percentile on our MAP test. We want our scores to be top-heavy in kindergarten first and second. And that's a higher goal than we had the previous year. The previous year, we were looking for 70%. And as it turned out, last year, we had 73. So we did not quite meet our new goal, but we exceeded what we had set out the year before. And this is, we had a two-part goal in this one. And the second part of it is that our third graders taking the state test for the first time would exceed the state average by 7%. And you'll see that our children did by 13%. So that was a good game. But I still have to say the goal was not met because it was a two-part goal and the first part wasn't met. Closing achievement gaps. Our district chose to reduce the gaps that we have in both reading and math, as measured by our state test, by 4% or more. And again, here, this is, you see a two-part goal. And you'll see that there is growth for some. In math, for example, our English language learners, the gap decreased by 14.5. That's desirable. The gap decreased for them by 1.9 in reading, so that was partial. Math, I'd have to say no. Reading, I'd have to say no too, partial. We're partway to the goal, but not for all of those. In our district, our main gaps are between our children on free and reduced lunch and those who are not, as well as special ed students and those who are not. Those are our two big categories. Then the second part of the goal is that we would increase proficiency by at least 4% for all student groups. And you may wonder why we only have black, Hispanic, and white, because we've got more kinds of children than that. But we can't report it if there are less than 20 students in the testable grades. So some groups might have 19 students or 15. It's too identifying of those groups. And the students can't be anonymous. It's not private anymore if we've got three kids and you know who they are and I tell you their scores. So we're very protective about that. Another goal is that all students are to be college and career-ready by the time they graduate. And for this, our district chose to use the ACT test scores. That's a test that we give to all juniors. And then some students can take it more times if they wish to on their own. Our goal was that we would equal or be greater than what the state score was. And again, I would say we did not meet. The Minnesota score was composite score 21.5. Our district composite was 20.8. So we're less than a point difference there. If you want to look particularly at Kennedy, we were 21.2. So almost right on with the state. And that would be the majority of our students.
Carrie, if students do take the second time, is that the score that's used? Whatever latest test they took, that's the one that's used?
I believe so.
Okay.
That's correct.
The numbers that I put out here are for the senior class, the class of 2017. So some kids have tried it multiple times by then.
Yeah, okay.
We'll have to look at this because we're a school that last, we required all of our students to take the ACT. And now in Minnesota, you don't have to do that. So there's a number of districts that didn't. So it'd be nice to have a comparable of other school districts that require the ACT.
That'll skew the numbers.
Yeah. But we're close.
Now, last year, we were still one of the states that required all students to do that, and the state paid for it. So there was very high participation last year. And of the states that require all students to participate, Minnesota came in top, number one in our nation of those states. And there were 17 of them. And I'm really proud of our Kennedy score particularly. We're right there. And when you compare that nationally, our students are doing well. It's hard to say we didn't meet the goal when you pick it apart like that, but we did well. All students graduate, that's another goal. And the state is looking here for a four-year graduation rate. District-wide, we were hoping to go from 68.7 in 2015 to 75% in 2016. Now, this data doesn't look very fresh and new, but this is what the state publishes because it takes them a year-plus to gather the information and then they put it back out. So this is as current as it gets in what the state has publicly. You'll notice the detail though, students who are with us four years, five years, or six years of high school, the longer they stay with us, the greater the likelihood that they will graduate. Some special ed students stay until they're 21. It's common for students at alternative schools to stay until they're 21. Sometimes in this building, we have students who are 19, possibly 20. But if they stay with us, they have a much better chance of graduating. And the other side of that is students who are dropouts or leave us, if they do not serve us in another public school, we carry them on our records until they do so. And if they don't ever surface, that's our score to carry.
Right. And our online school, you'll see, is very low. And the issue there is a student can come from the city. Let's just say they decide to transfer into IQ Academy. And they could come anytime during that senior year. And if they don't graduate, then we get the hit, if you will, that they're not graduating. The new ESSA law, Every Student Succeeds Act, they take a look at where the student has resided the longest. So if they've been in, I'll take Minneapolis Public Schools for, you know, the ninth through 11th grade and all the way through maybe even part of their senior year, that's who would get the "didn't graduate" from versus, we're trying to be the solution. You know, we're trying to help the student out and not be a problem. We want to help them with their career. And here, we're actually getting dinged, if you will, by a lower graduation rate. So we'll...
And that's effective 2018?
Uh, no. Because ESSA won't start until next, it'll be 19, it'll be 2018, 19, I think. So that's one that, you know, makes us look not as good on that graduation rate.
I think I got the Kennedy down at the bottom there. Our Kennedy graduation rate in this particular building is 97.1. That's admirable. And again, that is the majority of our students. And then the next section is about identified needs based on data. This is the background that led us to set the goals as we did. In the area of kindergarten readiness, we recognize that we need to do more to take that readiness information and give some feedback to our daycares, our preschools, agencies that work with children, families. We need to give information back to them about particularly the children who aren't ready, but those who are also. What is it that a student needs to be ready for when they come to kindergarten? In third grade literacy, the IQ school, our online school, has the elementary option right now. And it was recognized that they needed some more work with interventions and helping children. And so that was added this last year. Closing achievement gaps. I mentioned already, our greatest gap is between special ed and non-special ed. And you've got the detail there, about 30% between those two groups of students in reading and math. In the area of college and career readiness, we recognize that in our particular community, we have needs for, in the medical area, and also in modern manufacturing. And we were able to initiate a certified nursing assistant course last year with the help of our local nursing homes particularly, and lots of support from modern manufacturing for our industrial tech department. That was very positive. And then at the bottom of that page, we're to make some comments about strategies of support for students. The professional learning communities that teachers participate in monthly do quite a bit of data study. They look at student growth by the month. They look at test scores. We do other assessments than state testing in the spring, particularly with reading. And the teachers review those kinds of things to see what they can do within their classrooms. We also have a number of intervention programs that are built for students who are maybe not special ed, but they're working below grade level and they need to grow faster so they can get back on pace with their own, their own class needs.
Thanks Carrie.
Yes?
Do you know when the new test is going to be, the citizenship test? When is that going to be given? Is that each semester, depending on when you're in social studies?
We're giving it already.
Okay.
It is, I think it's two years before it's required of that graduating class. So we're already doing it with students who are, you know, younger than that.
Okay.
It's kind of an unusual requirement. The test is online. You can go check that out tonight if you want to. We're supposed to have students take it, but there's no requirement that they pass it. There are no teeth to that, to that particular requirement. But we are already doing it.
Okay.
And districts have a lot of discretion if they want to do it paper, pencil, or drew and balls, or orally, or online. We make up, we take their questions and format them however we wish to do it.
Okay.
Elizabeth Abraham's, she worked on it last year and this year as well. Mr. Ness mentioned ESSA, the new federal law that's going to replace Nocheau left behind. Moving forward, attendance is going to be one of the factors there that also will be used to measure the quality of the school, student attendance. So we are preparing for that, not knowing quite what the requirement is going to be. Then in the area, in 4B, we have to document that our teachers and our principals are qualified and that they're learning and that they're evaluated appropriately. And there's a summary there of our district's evaluation process. That's not new this year. That was implemented a year ago, and we're carrying forward with that. In Section 4C, there are several significant improvement efforts that were made in the last year. We had new FIED and health curriculum for grades K through 12. We implemented a heart monitor system there that used some technology and improved communication possibilities between teachers and students and teachers and their parents. Role language and music curriculum was studied, and that was off the ground this fall, so we'll tell more about that a year from now. Last year, the STEM Academy, the engineering program in industrial tech, was in its second year. And we're starting our third year there now, making connections between the modern manufacturing community here and our students. We carry on the training for teachers, for teacher leaders of our professional learning communities to keep those active. Another big thing that happened last year was the development of the Teacher Mentor Program, mentors and mentees for our numerous new employees. And that's implemented this year, but last year was a year of planning. And then we also hosted the Google Summit for Technology last year. Then the last page, we have to assure that our students have equitable access to excellent teachers, depending on teacher's education and if they're appropriately licensed and certified for what they do teach. In our district, I think we have an advantage because of our configuration. We really can't say that the bad teachers are over at that school and the good ones are here because we put the grade levels together. And you'll see the detail there of the number of years' experience or the educational requirements that our teachers have met.
Any questions for Liz Thompson?
The goals that you've set, you indicated how you came up with them, but the numerical amount, how do you, do you just take what number we had last year and juice it up a little bit, or is it...
That's about it. We try to ratchet it up to something that would be reasonable, but a real stretch. And I really am not, I'm not ashamed that we haven't met the goals because we really pushed them up higher. We really did. And we made strides to most of them, their goals. And we did all that we could. We didn't hold back anything to meet them.
Right. And they're just district goals. They're not statewide goals. Every single school district has a separate set of goals that they might be at.
So if we wanted to buff up this meeting, we could set our goals really long. We'd look super...
That's true.
But we might not be serving students as well.
That might happen in some places, but we're trying to stretch. Trying to achieve good things.
Yeah.
Great things.
Yeah. It's pretty, it's neat. And it's kind of refreshing to see all the statistical analysis too.
I like that.
Yeah.
So this report, along with the full report, it will be on the district website. So if there's a Google poll, or there's a link, I should say, that they connect to, it'll have every year from 2014 on up through this year after it's approved. So we'll do that after it's approved, so tomorrow.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now we'll begin with our usual meeting, starting with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call this regular school board meeting of independent school district number 544 to order. And the first item of business will be to establish our quorum. So, sir?
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melissa Hermes.
Present.
Steven Vigasov, here. Matt Lenke, not here. Blaine Danielson, here. Conolly Cole. Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the items on the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, aye. The agenda is passed. We'll give a couple of acknowledgements. Thanks to Dean and Julianne Gutsmer for their donation of clothing, which was valued at $270, given to Mrs. Rimquist's classroom at Cleveland School. And congratulations to the girls swimming and diving state participants. Ella Childs, Madison Hubert, Emma Kokritz, Brindanae, Julia Swanson, Elena Keller, and Cameron Appberg.
And Cameron did take fourth place in the state indictee. So that was outstanding.
Wow, that is great. Super. And we'll move on to reports. And tonight, we have Ms. Lori Roeder here for our Europe trip for 2019. Thanks.
Wow. Okay, well, thank you. I knew faces. That's the last time I did this spiel. So, all right. So I'll just give you a little rundown on what is in the hopper for 2019. So you should have the itinerary. It's, I've changed it up a little bit. It's called Europe at Leisure. You should have got something like this. Or you might have got not the fancy one.
Right, right.
Okay. All right. So this, I've cut it down from 17 to 15 days for a couple reasons. One, I'm getting older and tired at the end of 17 days. But more to the point is that this tour gives us more time in each city. So we've cut out a couple cities, but this gives us more time in London. It gives us more time in Paris. It gives us more time in Florence. With, you know, we live in a world where terrorism is part, has become part of the daily routine over there and here as well. So when we go to these cities, many of the places, the sites that we want to see have increased security. And so it results in longer lines, and it takes a lot longer for the kids to get in to see something. So by extending the days that we're at a city, we're able to see more sights. Last time we were in Paris, and they barely touched on Paris because we did Versailles one day, and then it was just a whirlwind to get everything that we want to see. And of course, we always do the Eiffel Tower and the River Cruise, and that's amazing. But there's lots of other cool parts of Paris that we just don't have time to see. You know, they want to go to Notre Dame and the line to Notre Dame. They want to go, you know, to some of the other cathedrals around there, and there's a line just because of the security. So by doing this trip, it gives the kids more time and more opportunity to really get a feel for the cities. And the other thing that I've asked on this tour, and before, on the last tour, you know, we just, I did one last summer. And so the, our tour director, this, we've become pretty good friends. And so she's agreed to do this with us again next time. So before I left, we sat down and I said, you know, "Help me make a good tour." So we looked at this one, and she said, "But you know, I want you to request that we do it in reverse. So we're going to start in Rome and end in London." Because that way, the kids kind of get the groove of how to be group travel before we get to the big cities with the subways and, you know, they connect it as a group. And so that sounds like a really good idea. And she's an experienced tour guide. She does workshops for new tour directors, I shouldn't say tour guide, tour directors. So she's amazing. And so she said, "Yes, I will do it with you, and this is what we're going to do." And so that's what we're doing. Her name is Lydia. She is amazing. I can't remember if Johnny had Lydia or not. Okay. So again, the price here, it is expensive. These things are not getting cheaper in price. And it just kind of hits a rock in my stomach. So you've seen the price. It's $43.70 for this. And that's another reason I like to have it two years out because it gives families time to, it's not quite a strain on the budget. And we've been doing this trip long enough now that kids are saying, "Oh, I've been saving since seventh grade. I knew that this was coming." So they, the word's out, so just speak. And so they've kind of been saving for it. But still, I like that two-year span of time. It gives, it's just not quite a financial burden for the families. The other thing we are going to do is, I've been on the, I've been emailing Lydia. One of the options that they have is Stonehenge and Salisbury. And I wasn't sure if the kids would like that one or not, but I emailed Lydia. The kids love that one. She said, "Make that a part of their trip because they love Stonehenge." But she said, "Really what they like is Salisbury because one of the cathedrals there, they used in Harry Potter." So they're very excited to go. Yeah, it's Harry Potterville. So, yeah, it's all good. So again, it's 15 days, as I said. It's just a slower one. Start the customers. I'll be going with EF again. This is a tour that I've used for, this is my seventh tour, and I've used EF with all of these. Part of the reason is it really, I've looked at other ones, and it is the most cost-efficient, even though this is a huge chunk of change at $4,300. For what they cover, that's round-trip airfare, all our transportation. We have a bus driver who's with us the whole time. We had, it's two meals a day. It's all our entrance to everything that's on the itinerary. Even though it is expensive, you really could not see what we see at that price. And so I really do like EF. The other reason I like EF is because they do have offices in every city that we stop in. And so for those of you who haven't heard this spiel before, I often forget things in one city. So EF is really good about, they have enough tours going that if I forget my, you know, charger for my phone in London, there's another tour that's on, another group that's on the same tour, and they're a day behind us. And so usually, they can grab my cellphone charger or whatever. I didn't leave anything last trip, but I have in the past. And so we can connect that way. And so that way, there's just that, they're so interconnected. And the other reason I like them is that they're really good. They've worked very well with me in times when, you know, things haven't always gone as smoothly as we wanted. And I like they have the peace of mind program. So if, you know, right before we get ready to leave, you know, God forbid, you know, something happens, they will automatically change our itinerary. So if something happens in London, we just won't go to London that day. And so the last trip we went on, there was something, there was the bombing at the Selena Gomez concert or who was it? I don't remember.
Ariana Grande.
Who?
Ariana Grande.
Okay, yeah, you're right. Okay, so I'm not...
That's more impressive with Mark. Mark, how is he...
That wasn't in London though.
No, no, but it was, but it was Manchester. But I asked our tour director, I said, "What did you do then?" She said, "No, we immediately got all the kids back in the hotels and got them out of there." So just the fact that they're that organized. And they also sent an email out to us right away and to the parents and said that "We are aware of this, and we're doing everything to keep our kids safe." So I liked that they're just on the ball with that. So, and again, I get to work with Lydia, who is amazing, and I love her. All right. All right. And then, we have, again, we'll be doing the code of conduct, behavior policy. Again, this is, you know, a result of having gone on seven tours. So, not all of them as smooth as we went out. Okay, so, again, it's a three-strike policy. It starts from when they sign up for the, well, actually, from when you approve the trip. So, it goes from, that's the date. And so, students, again, if you can, I'll just kind of quickly go over those with you. Except I think I'm missing a page on mine.
Yeah. It's actually four pages.
Oh, see, I'm missing page two on mine. Well, basically, it's, you know, if students have, you know, any policy, alcohol, tobacco, if it's, if it's before, like a year or so out, everybody makes mistakes now and then. So, when they go on the trip, they only have one strike. If it's closer to the time we leave, it's two strikes. And if something happens overseas and they get another strike, then they are sent home. And the parents do have to sign this policy. And we really have, we've had amazing kids go over who have been just extremely marvelous ambassadors for our country. They're amazing kids. I'm really proud of how well Fergus Falls students, they're so respectful of the culture. And the last group we took, they tried anything. Hey, you guys want to climb 475 steps up this tower? They're like, yeah. And they're like, really? Okay, I guess, I guess I'm going that 475 steps. So, yeah, they were amazing. So, anyway, that is the tour. And do you have any questions for me?
This will be on the December 11th agenda. So, if you think of something, you could email me, which I would get the answer from Mrs. Roder. But.
How many students, Lori?
Well, last time we had 24. And this time, I have 30 families who've expressed interest. And this time, I have 11 boys who are like, Mrs. Roder, we want to go. Which is, usually, it's more girls than boys. So, yeah. So, right now, there are about 15 kids who really want to go, who are kind of interested in going, so.
And this goes with some of the curriculum that classes that you're teaching?
Right, right. So, it goes with myths and legends, which is basic, well, mythology. So, we study the Roman mythology and the Greek mythology. And then, of course, all that, wherever we go, that mythology is such a part of Western Civ. So, when they go to Versailles, they look in the room and there's a room dedicated to Apollo. And there is a room dedicated to Zeus. And so, and all the statues in Versailles are all the gods and goddesses. So, it's always fun because then they'll say, oh, yeah. You know, that, it's really nice for me to see that, oh, they actually remember something that they taught. It's also connected with Western Civ. So, Mr. Hanson teaches Western Civ. And so, we, if students take either of those classes, we feel they have the background information that they need to really appreciate what they're learning and, you know, make a connection to what they're learning. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Continuing on with our agenda, then, we'll have reports and correspondence from all the board members. And then, a message from Superintendent Ness. All start. Special education cooperative meeting. We had that meeting last Monday. And the big news there is the annual child count, which takes place on December 1st, which is rather intensive and very significant for funding. So, the count is real, excuse me, really to get, on that day, all the kids that you're serving counted for and send the information into the state. So, that's a big deal. We hired another parent professional in that, when we had that meeting. And talked about the audit, which should be ready next month. And approved the certified teacher contract. So, that brings into my next board report on negotiations. And we talked about that last meeting. So, I imagine I can take that off the agenda. We had a special meeting on Monday, the 13th, and approved the certified staff contract. The last report from me is Region One Technology Cooperative of Moorhead. And nothing of significant interest. We talked about staffing and the details of who's adding synergy and Meals Plus to their school district and some of the politics behind the various service providers and all that. But as far as public information, not too much of note. So, that's a short summary of my board reports. Any questions for me? All right. We'll move on to Ms. Hermes, your board reports.
Okay. The District Curriculum Review Advisory Committee has met twice now since the last time I reported. And at their October meeting, we got to meet the new members of the committee. And so, I just want to reiterate what Carrie said, thanking community and parent reps for, representatives for joining that committee. And for those of you that haven't been to one of those committee meetings, I'll just read this. The purpose of the District Curriculum Review Advisory Committee is to ensure active community participation in planning and improving the instruction curriculum and to make recommendations to the school board. And so, at the October meeting, Carrie gave an update on everyday math, the curriculum that is used in elementary grades. And I guess there was an update on synergy. And then, they went over the test scores. And you already said about the ACT. And then, at the November meeting, it was long. It was a long meeting and I took a lot of notes. And I have to say thanks too to Hannah Lehman, who's the secretary, for taking notes as well because they were fantastic. Because there was a lot that was said. So, we had reports from the visual arts department, ag and industrial tech, the automotive department, library and media, business and computer literacy. And probably the biggest takeaway from that committee, from that meeting, came from the visual arts department. And the person, the teacher reporting was Peter Butenhoff. And what, first of all, for, I didn't really, I hadn't thought much about the State Department of Education, state standards, but there's four arts that are covered under the DOE state standards, dance, theater, music, and visual arts. And that, we mainly focus on music and visual arts here, although dance is covered in FIED. And theater, I think, is, although I know that we've talked about offering a theater comprehensive class that I don't think enough students have signed up for that yet, for that actually to have gone through. But what was, there's a concern from the people on the committee, and it's been brought up before, about while Fergus Falls has a fant, our school system has a fantastic music department, we only have two certified visual arts teachers. And they teach now, luckily, in grades five. That's added this year through 12. And in the fifth and sixth grade classes, some of them, they're such a popular class, there are 35 and 36 students in a class like that. But in the elementary schools, classroom teachers without art certification are being asked to teach art. And while members of the District Curriculum Review Advisory Committee are pleased that we have such a successful music department, they're concerned about the lack of certified visual arts teach, curriculum in the elementary schools. So, and also, you know, they mentioned that because Fergus Falls is such a small town, but we have a huge national reputation as a community that embraces, is really a Mecca for visual arts, like the Cadets Gallery, Springboard for the Arts, and the Center for the Arts, having gallery space, et cetera. So, that was that. Let's see, what else? The personal reporting for the industrial tech classes, they, it was Dennis Wetzke. I hope I'm saying his name right. Okay, so he was the ag, high school ag teacher that reported back on their classes. And a question was asked, and I wasn't sure how to answer, maybe somebody here can answer for me, on how many students are needed in order to run a class? That they have classes that they have in their course offerings, but they haven't been run, such as natural resources and wildlife management and veterinary science. They talked about upgrading technology. And I think that's a recurring theme probably in a lot of classes that reported, or departments that reported. In automotive, Joel Heikus is a second-year automotive instructor. And he presented for the automotive department. And he said, they're looking to update the textbooks to have them, which a lot of departments have done, to have them online so that it's easier for, when things change, as they do frequently, I guess, in the automotive world, that that's updated right away. And let's see. Roy Anderson presented for library and media, which is up for curriculum review. And one thing that he mentioned is the teachers would like to, there's a need for leveled readers at the elementary level. Then, it was really interesting to hear from the business and computer literacy department, from Cindy Appert and Carrie Sicking. And all the things that they're doing. And they too are talking about the need to upgrade technology. And they asked us, wrote all of us, an interesting question, how old is the cellphone that we had as a comparison? And I hadn't thought of it before. But they also talked about the possibility of having a digital photography class, if there was interest in that. And all in all, it was a very productive and very interesting meeting. And we don't meet again until January, I think. Is that right?
That's right.
Right, so. Any questions? Oh, that.
Do we know how many students are needed for a class? Does anybody know?
It really depends on the class. High school classes are much different as far as the need. And in auto shop, right now, we're trying to build the program, for example. So, there might be less this year, but you've got to get more enrolled next year to keep things going. So, it depends on the budget, depends on the students, all these different things. So, in the high school, we're really, we're kind of, we're waiting for all these K through eight students to come up. These classes are going to get filled more so. So, we have smaller classes, you know, it might be physics, for example, will have less because there's less students taking that versus a literature class, a requirement. So, is it a required, is it elective? So, it's not an easy answer. We really would like to see 15 at least, but I know we have classes that are probably less than that. But it's, but it's a, it's a matter of, can you afford to continue to do that? You've got to, you've got to keep your budget adjusted all the time, or your staff adjusted to the students.
Sure.
That was a pretty vague answer for it.
You're right.
But if it, there's a lot of factors involved. But we really, really try to like have, you know, really, if we could, 25 in every class is awesome, you know? But, but in a shop class, that might be too many because you're dealing with power tools and different things too. So, you want to make sure that you have appropriate numbers for, for the class.
And did you have more, Ms.?
On the legislative liaison? No, I do not. The legislature hasn't met yet, and I haven't.
Okay.
No.
The big thing coming out of the legislature soon will be the forecast, the end of November, December 1 forecast for the, for the budgets. And then, they'll have another one in February, I believe. And that's what they'll base the budget. Are there any additional items that could possibly come to education will be based off of those forecasts?
Or not.
Or not.
All right. Natalie Knudsen.
The policy committee has not met since our last meeting. And the wellness committee met last Tuesday. One of the big topics of discussion is our LICE policy. And that was brought up again. So, they're kind of taking a look at what other schools are doing, what kind of HIPAA regulations we have to abide by, and possibly taking a look at revising our current policy. So, that is in the works. There's an employee wellness month going on right now. So, employees, those that want to engage are asked to just track physical activity minutes, time they've taken for their self, themselves, what kinds of things they're eating, drinking. So, just kind of a well-rounded month that they're able to take part in. There's also a new mosaic program with a food program. And this is a grant-funded opportunity, I believe. And they're looking at providing nutritional facts, including carb counts for the food that's offered in cafeteria. So, that's kind of a work in progress. And then, healthy options have been added to the ALC school store called Smart Snacks. And Kristen Tool over there is working with the county on continuing to develop healthier options for the students over there. And then, Kate Heitcheck is also going to be doing a survey with her students, her fact students, to see what kind of things can be implemented here at Kennedy. So, healthier options at breakfast and at lunch. So, that's about it.
All right. Any questions for Natalie?
Thank you.
And we'll move on to Blaine Danielson.
Yeah, a few things here. I'll try to go quick, keep moving. 544 met November 9th. And a big thing there, up to 476 new members. So, they're getting closer to the 500 goal. And then, also, we did have a presentation from high school senior, Joe Connelly. He received a scholarship from last summer. So, he attended a conference, or definitely called a conference, but out in Washington, DC. And had the opportunity to get a little information on the terrorist situation, how to handle that, some things at the Pentagon, and different, kind of some real-life scenarios that some groups broke down into and did some things with that. So, it was an interesting presentation. He did a good job on that. So, meet and confer, we met on November 9th also. A lot of things were on the agenda. Probably the two big things were parking-related, which is, they've kind of come up. And Dean and Superintendent Ness are working on some of that as far as the teachers and having parking areas. And then, there's some other things on there too, as far as conferences and some different things they'd like to maybe see with that. And then, the calendar. And so, copy the calendar. This year, just hand about that they can make some adjustments on. And so, we'll be approving that at the next meet and confer. We're taking their suggestions and seeing what's going to work and intro finalize that. And then, for buildings and grounds, a big thing, just talked to Mark a little bit ago. Getting real close on the new building down there. Potentially, we'd like to think that they're going to get the old one tore down yet this year, but we'll see how that goes, depending on the weather and anything like that. And then, other projects continue at all the other schools too. Here, hopefully, soon, they'll be getting done with the science classes also. I think everybody probably got the email from Mark last week on that, that they're trying to get those wrapped up for the teachers. So, that's about it on what I've got.
Okay. Any questions for Lori? Steven Vigasov?
Staff development committee met. I was not able to attend because of work. But according to the minutes of the meeting, the budget's pretty much allocated for the year. There's only about $200 left, which is a good sign that our teachers care about the development and how to get better at their craft, so to speak. Pretty short meeting. And they spent the rest of the time basically just planning the January 15th meeting. So, that's pretty much all I've got for that.
All right. Any questions for Steven? Matt, you want to chime in on your board reports?
Come on up.
Minnesota High School League, they haven't met yet, so I have another report for them. The County Service Co-op did meet. And their big thing that they're working on right now, again, is with insurance and transferring, transferring from being a co-op to a state. So, they're seeing a deduction in revenue just because of money, because it's not moving into the state pool instead of the co-op. And this will continue on. So, that was probably the big thing that was talked about at the co-op meeting.
So, it's all the co-ops combining together to make a state plan? So, it's still a co-op plan, but it's, but it's all the state together?
And ultimately, they're going to have, what they will have is state plans, is what they're going to get to. But this is just the initial part. And it'll take a little bit of time, but that's what they're working on.
All right.
And the Minnesota High School League, Dave Stead has been there forever. Eric Martins is the principal at Sauk Rapids Race. He's the new David Stead. So, I'm not surprised at all. He's a great, great guy. And he's been president of Minnesota High School League recently. So, he's, he'll do really well. Good guy.
That's it? All right. And then Superintendent Ness?
Just a couple of things here. We have a long-term facility committee at 6:30 at the, in the cafeteria here tonight. And then, also, on December 11th, at 6:30, we'll meet in this room, in the outer community room. So, just want to invite people to do that. We had our parent-teacher conferences, you know, just a few weeks ago now. We got into the quarter. We were transferring. You've mentioned synergy when we were at meeting with the district curriculum. We just wanted to ask them, how was it going with them and connecting? So, there's always bugs when you go into a new program. But overall, the staff were surveyed, 80% of them liked synergy better than power school. We're getting our answers completed and their training in. So, we're really pleased. We're getting our answers completed and their training in, so we're really pleased with that result. And then it's concert season, so back tonight, there's a middle school band concert at 7:00. And check your calendar, there's just lots of things happening. And I'm shocked it's already Thanksgiving week. Can you believe that? And pretty soon, it'll be the first of the year, and the reorganization is like, holy cow. Hang on, but it's, it's good. So, and our, our kids do amazing jobs in, in these concerts. They're a lot of fun, so please join us.
Great. All right. We'll move on to our general consent items, and we have for consideration in that category, the minutes from our October 23 regular school board meeting, and then minutes from our November 13 special school board meeting. And then a couple of personnel items that the superintendent will cover.
Yes, we have Amber Hublin, excuse me, resigned from her prior educated position at McKinley, and that is currently being advertised and we'll be interviewing. And a coach, head coach resignation, Mark Aho, resigned as head boys' baseball coach, and that's effective November 8. And that has been advertised, and they were interviewing within the next two weeks for that position as well.
Great. And then Natalie, what do we have for bills and treasures report?
We have $8.5 million from the bank right now, so we're sitting really, really well. The reports for next month will be a little bit less just due to the state divying out the funds. We won't be receiving as much as we normally do. Is that correct? So yeah, we're sitting good.
Great. All right. Any, is anyone willing to offer a motion to accept the general consent items?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on any of these pieces? Why are we going to get a little bit less this time?
It's the way they meter it out. The state knows that the school district got their county money, so they're holding back. It's something that we've done every year.
Okay, very well. All right. Any other questions? All in favor of approving the general consent items, say aye. Oppose, say nay. That's approved, and we will move on to new business where I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2016-17 Ferguson Public Schools World's Best Workforce Report as presented by Kerry Thompson tonight at this meeting. Would someone offer that motion? Is there a second?
A little second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved, wholeheartedly. Aye. Thank you, Kerry. Would someone offer the motion for a spring 2018 memorandum of agreement between the University of Minnesota-Crookston and our school district for college and the high school?
And just so you know, we teach, we go through the U of M and Crookston for math and physics, those high-level math courses and physics.
Yeah. So the offering this motion would allow us to continue to collaborate to, to have those classes in our school?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. All right. More like, okay, and then, this will not require action, but we all have business manager Massey, who you are audit finding.
Matt, please come on up.
Yeah, you're making me nervous.
Don't let them back in.
You were given a copy of the audit, and I'm only going to go through three pages of the 64 pages because, yeah. I'll let you, because this is only the first reading, and I'll let you take it home and read it at your leisure. There will be a test. If you turn to page three of the audit, it's actually about five or six pages in. So right at the top, it says opinions. And there, it says that our audit has been stated all fairly in all respects, and it's an unqualified report. And that's the best an auditor can absolutely give. So I point that out every year because you wonder what you're doing with this whole big audit. Well, that, that little paragraph is, means everything to auditors. And it should as well as to you as to the validity of this audit. I want to then switch over to page 15. The audit is kind of split up into what they call kind of like a governmental thing and then a kind of a public thing. So you've got numerous pages of what the audit would look like if you were in a business, and then suddenly they switch to, well, what's really important to the school district? And you get, you get about two or three pages that are really interesting for the school district, okay? Then after that, the audit is filled with a bunch of documents that bonding companies and federal agencies and everything else love, and they couldn't care less about the rest. So really, there isn't a lot in the audit that really affect you, other than, like I said, page 15, it shows our assets and our liabilities, but more importantly, our fund balance. And if you look in the column that says general fund, the unassigned fund balance is at $4.84 million. It wasn't that long ago that that number was $1.7 million deficit. And so it is taking, taken, what, 10 years or so for us to get back to where we belong? And initially, I think some people will say, holy cow, you've got $4.8 million, you're rich! And reality is, we measure fund balance by taking fund balance, that number, and dividing it by our total expenditures. And we are at 17.8%. And then you compare that to what other school districts are doing, and the state average is somewhere in the neighborhood of 22, 24%. So yeah, we have lots of money, but in comparison to other school districts, we're still a little bit, tiny bit, below average. And so I just caution you because the temptation from when we, where we're at, where we had absolutely no money, to right now, that the mentality will quickly change to, well, let's spend it. And so we've got to be careful. Took us a long time to get to this point, and quite frankly, it took us a very short time to get back in the hole when we did. So, I wanted to point that number out to you and scold you a little bit. And then on page 17, it's just our revenue and expenditures. Primarily, you'll see in the general fund, our revenues kind of skyrocketed on us because when we're developing our budget, we run a bunch of assumptions, and then the next thing you know, more kids show up than what we planned for. And so we built our budget as if we had fewer kids, and then ended up with more kids. It doesn't, like I say, it doesn't take very long for the opposite to happen as well, where you can fill a budget and suddenly the kids aren't there, and you're in the hole very quickly. So those are the basic pages that I wanted to show you. And then, like I say, all 64 pages, you can go through at your leisure, but this is the first reading, and we'll approve more at your recommendation for approval on the December meeting.
All right.
Mark, the page where we are, comparison to the other school districts and where we rank on some of the different issues?
Oh, okay.
What page is that again?
I'll show you that. So this side.
Oh, here it is. 10, page 10.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's probably a very good page to take a look at. One of the, one of, that really strikes out for me is when you look at four, six, the last one, where it says we're 460th out of 499 school districts in terms of total expenditures per student. And that's, we're right near the bottom in terms of how much we spend per kid, and yet our test scores are up there. It's like, woo-hoo. We do, we do a good bang for the buck here in Ferguson. And I would have to say, we have nice facilities, we have great teachers, we pay our people well, and yet we're, we're still doing it on a shoestring.
There's about 343 school districts, and the rest would be charter schools. So I think there's 499 is the number. So you add your regular school districts, would be 343, whatever that is, to get to the 499. So, and so the rank, you know, that would be, like, we're 74th in enrollment. I think in Oka Hennepin is one.
Yep. And the other thing that I thought was interesting too is, we are now the 74th, or back then, we were the 74th largest school district in the state. We were 75th. And so that shows you the trend is going up, and we kicked Red Wing to the side.
There you go. Good. All right. So a little work to digest that, there are board members. And we'll keep moving on our agenda. Exem motion to award bids on Food for the Meal program. Actually, to make the motion a little more accurate, I'll read this first, and then once again, call for the motion. The results of the board's call for prices on food products for the 1718 school year for the time period from December 1st, 2017, to February 28th, 2018 resulted in three bids. US Foods had a bid with a total cost of $66,411.81. That was the low bid. Reinhardt Foods, Reinhardt Food Service bid at $70,922.42. And then Food Services of America bid at $71,923.92. So I would entertain a motion then for someone to award the Food for the Meal program.
I'll make a motion to recommend we accept US Foods as our food provider.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions or discussion on this topic?
Just so that you're aware, the price that you see on there is based on a projection of, of numbers. It won't be that actual amount, but they, what they did is they bid on pricing. And then we guesstimated what our volume would be and did the math. One interesting thing was Reinhardt, the last time we did, US Foods was the only vendor, and they've been our vendor for the last couple of years, but now we've had two other competitors that want in on the business. And Reinhardt had one item on, on their beef that they investigated and said, well, we're going to do better next time on our beef and get, win this bid, because it was one item that made the difference. So it's good to have competition and good to have companies interested in surveys.
Good. All right. All in favor, any other questions or comments? All in favor of awarding the bids to US Foods for the Food for the Meal program? Say aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, that's awarded. And then we have a resolution. Guess what? On an election. Huh. Another one. So, and this is another final piece of the action here. Resolution authorizing issuance of certificate of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. Whereas the board has canvassed the special election for a school board member held on November 13, 2017, now therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 544, State of Minnesota, as follows. Number one, the chair and clerk are hereby authorized to execute a certificate of election on the behalf of the School Board of Independent School District Number 544 to the following candidate, Misses, in parentheses, Melissa Hermes, who has received a larger number of votes to be elected to fill a vacancy on the school board in the term expired January 7, 2019, based on the results of the canvass. Number two, the certificate of election shall be in substantially the form here, attached here too. Number three, after the time for contesting election has passed and the candidate has filed all campaign financial reports as required by Minnesota Statute, Chapter 211A, the clerk of the school board is hereby directed to deliver the certificate to the person entitled hereto personally or by certified mail. Number four, the clerk is hereby directed to enclose with the certificate a form of acceptance of office and oath of office in substantially the form attached here too. So will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you please take the floor?
Now, let me keep, yes, Missy Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Biggison?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Blaine Daniels?
Yes.
Natalie Cooper?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Very good. Congratulations yet again. All righty. And next, we will entertain a motion for a revision of policy 902, our school board policy on the use of school facilities. This was attached information in the packet with some additional information about the changes, so would someone be willing to offer that resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Any discussion on it?
I could, I'd like to review this. You know, basically, we have a net policy 902, it's on use of school facilities by community groups. What we did here is we expanded facilities to include grounds, so facilities and grounds, and we also did community groups slash individuals. And one of the key things here, we just wanted to make sure that we were able to control posting of materials, posting of notices, signage, different things like that. And we just want to make sure that either myself, superintendent, the business manager, or a designated would approve those items. So that's basically what, it's a fairly minor changes, but really, it's, it's expanding facilities to buildings and grounds, school, including school buildings and grounds, and then also just making sure that there's proper approval for notices, signage, that type of things placed on our property.
Jerry, did we check with any other districts around just how they, they've had instances like that or situations, you know, what do they have in their policies, or anything different that we may need to add to?
I did not check with other, others. We have items where, for staff and for students, there was a policy 531 on, on posting things, but we really had nothing for the community, so. So I just worked with Pemberton, said this was the appropriate policy, and then to make the changes. So this is their recommendation.
Good. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor of approving the revision, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that approval is granted. Next, I'd look for a motion for approval of the agreement between Lakla Mental Health Center Incorporated in our school district for the Employee Assistance Program. This would be effective from January 1st of 2018 to the 31st of 2019. Would someone offer that motion?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
All right. And it's noted in our packet that the contract increased $3 per visit, so it'd be $98 a visit cost to the school district if used, and the contract allows for three sessions per year for employee or family member. So it is one of our benefits. Any, any other discussion or questions? All in favor of approving this contract? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say the same thing? Okay. That is approved. Actually, not a contract, but an agreement, I should have said, so. And then we will close our school board meeting to have the board stick around and discuss the evaluation of Superintendent Jerry Ness, his annual performance evaluation, make recommendations for our focus for next year. And then we will reopen the meeting, and then we will close the meeting. So.
Attorney.
Oh, yeah, and then, oh, yeah, then, okay, we'll reopen the meeting, and then I'll do a little, you know, short commentary about the results, and then, and then we'll go for adjournment. So since this is, since people might not stick around, I note then, in December, we only have one meeting, the 11th. It's preceded by a technology plan and internet safety policy meeting, which is a real barnburner, I'm telling you. And then the public, of course, is invited in to talk about the taxes payable for children. And then, the public, of course, is invited in to talk about the taxes payable for 2018. That's the opportunity that they have to come to address their school officials and elected board members, and talk about what it costs.
That's a barn builder.
Just the flow of that meeting. So at 5 o'clock, we will start our regular agenda and exhaust everything on the agenda. And with that, then we will take a momentary pause here, if you will, and we'll do the technology plan and internet. And then we have to wait until 6:00 PM, because that's a posted time. So we might have a break in there, a gap in time. But at 6:00, then we will have the taxes payable, and then we will continue the meeting. And then if there's any adjustments to our tax dollar amount, you would do that. You need to have the hearing first, make adjustments if there are any adjustments, and then after that, you would adjourn the meeting.
You're going to show up and coach us through that, right?
We will do that, yes.
Okay, good. And then, after we're done with all that, we will join the Long-Term Facilities Committee meeting, which is taking place tonight. So with that, is there a motion to close the meeting?
Some would.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, the meeting is closed at 6:11.
Some would.
Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I was just making assumptions.
Number six will still hold, huh? Number six? I'm not sure.
Yes.
I would seek a motion to reopen the board meeting.
Some would.
All right, and a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on reopening the board meeting? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. And then, the item that we discussed during the closing of the board meeting was the annual evaluation of Superintendent Jerry Ness. And it's noteworthy that the evaluation results are, I think, the highest. Superintendent Ness has received, it was a very positive cumulative score that he received. We spent our time discussing areas that we found satisfactory, things we noticed that we'd like to see adjustments. And then, one of our primary topics was to look through our board goals that we set earlier this year, and then set a direction for Superintendent Ness for his focus for the, until this time next year. And so we picked a focus and did a little brainstorming on concrete steps that we thought might have potential to improve the focus on those goals. So that is a summary of Superintendent Ness's evaluation from the board chair. Is there a motion to approve that annually? There's no action required on that?
Just a summary.
Great. And that's it?
Then we just need to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Some would.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, thank you. We are adjourned.